Good evening and welcome to the February 2nd Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Rockland. Please direct your attention to Larry Ryan for the Fledge of Ouijans. Larry, do the honors.
I will. Fledge of Ouijans to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14. Verizon Channel 31 is also available live online at wrpsrockland.com/tv. And within 24 hours via video on demand at youtube, www.youtube.com/wrpsrockland. Please go to www.wrpsrockland.com for further information. First on the agenda, community announcements, healthcare worker of the week. Rockland school nurses, Fire Chief Scott Duffy and firefighter Tom Henderson. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. This is going to be our last week of doing the healthcare workers of the week. And I'm very pleased to announce a combination. We're going to recognize all the school nurses from the Rockland public schools. And I'd like to read a little something about each of them. And then we're also going to recognize Fire Chief Duffy and firefighter Tom Henderson. So I'd like to start with the school nurses. There are five of them. So the first is Bernadette Hanigan. Bernadette has 20 years of pediatric experience before becoming a school nurse in Rockland. Most of those years were at Shriners Hospital for Children. This is her first year as a school nurse at Esten Elementary, and she is so happy she made the leap. While it's been a challenge, it's also been extremely fulfilling for her. Next, and Bernadette is at the Esten School. Next is Shannon, excuse me, Shanney McGary. She's at Jefferson Elementary School. Shanney is a lifelong resident of Rockland. She became a school nurse after being inspired by her own children's school nurse. Going back to school at the age of 50, she fulfilled her dream of becoming the school nurse at Jefferson Elementary School. She's been at Jefferson, her old alma mater, for the past four years. Next is Flora Pang at Rogers Middle School. Flora joined Rogers Middle School in 2019 after working many years in the emergency department of a Boston hospital. She loves working with the students and enjoys the opportunity to see them through their middle school years. Next is Kathy Ryan at the high school. Kathy's been a school nurse in Rockland for 27 years. She started out working in the elementary schools, then in 2001, she became the head nurse for Rockland Public Schools, as well as a nationally certified school nurse. She is currently the school nurse at the high school. She loves caring and advocating for her students and staff and can't think of anything else she'd rather do. And then lastly is Julie Wilson at Memorial Park. Julie has 20 years of pediatric experience before becoming a school nurse. She's been a school nurse for six years and five of those years in Rockland at Memorial Park Elementary School. She's especially proud to be nationally recognized as a school nurse. And I just want to say, you know, in particular, that, you know, the school nurses are always critically important. You know, we've, I think, you know, we've all been to school or we have kids, we have families that are kids in school, and it's, it's always a critically important position. But now, in the middle of this pandemic, it's just off the charts. And I know for a fact, from what I've heard from our public safety officials, from our health agent, as well as from the school superintendent and business manager, you know, the school nurses have really risen up and have done incredible work above and beyond during this time. So we just really want to thank all of them for, for everything they've been doing for our community and for the students in their schools. And then next, I'd like to recognize a fire chief and a firefighter. And I'm going to, this was not coming from Town Hall, this was nominated from someone in the public. So I'd like to, I'd like to read what was submitted for them. I'd like to nominate two members of the Rockland Fire Department to be honored as healthcare workers of the week. Those members are the Fire Chief and Paramedic Scott Duffy and firefighter Thomas Henderson, who both reside in Rockland. Scott Duffy has been the chief of the Rockland Fire Department for over 10 years and a member of the fire service for about 24 years. When the pandemic began to arrive in the United States early in 2020, Chief Duffy began to bulk purchase personal protective equipment. He also began to produce the necessary tools and equipment that would sanitize the fire department ambulances and the areas inside the fire station. When this equipment became scarce, the fire department already had this equipment in stock due to the early preparedness done by Chief Duffy. He was also instrumental in procuring equipment for Rockland Town Hall to help stop the spread of the virus. Firefighter Paramedic Thomas Henderson has been a member of the Rockland Fire Department since 1994, beginning as a call firefighter, and then in January of 2000, he was appointed a full-time firefighter. Thomas is currently the paramedic coordinator for the Rockland Fire Department. He has been and still is the Director of Emergency Medical Services for over 12,000 members of the professional firefighters in Massachusetts. As the COVID vaccines became a reality, there were many questions about receiving the vaccine that would be administered to the firefighters. Thomas was able to consult with Dr. Eric Rubin, an infectious disease doctor at Brigham and Women's Hospital in Boston, who made a presentation to the firefighters. And when the Commonwealth was trying to decide who should be the next group to receive the vaccine after the doctors and nurses, Thomas and the firefighters' union got the ball rolling on Fox 25 News to make sure that firefighters, paramedics, and police officers would be next to receive the vaccines. It should have been an obvious choice, as these individuals are the first ones to care for the patient with coronavirus. This tribute that you and the Board of Selectmen bestow upon members of our community continues to recognize the dedicated healthcare individuals who live or work in the town of Rockland. It is so important that we continue to support all of our public safety employees. They are always there when we need them. So again, it seemed, you know, we didn't plan it this way, that it would end with, with a number of public employees, but I think it really couldn't be any better. And during this time, to recognize the school nurses and, and not just those two individuals, but really all the paramedics at the fire department. So I'm very pleased to do that. I know, I think we all feel the same.
Excellent.
That's a hard act to follow, but next I'll just mention a couple other announcements. The first is just a reminder to the public that we are having an annual town report photo contest. So individuals from the public can email in some nice photos, landscapes of the town, and we'll choose the winner to be published on the front and back cover of the annual town report. We publish quite a few of those every year. The exact email address is printed on our agenda, but they can be emailed to the town administrator of the Board of Selectmen's office, and the due date is February 19. And then the last announcement I had is that we do have quite a few vacancies on our charter review committee. And in addition to the charter review committee, I know the moderator's on the agenda, he'll talk about the finance committee. But in general, there are a number of elected boards and committees where individuals, you know, there's, nobody's pulled papers yet. And if you go on the town website and you scroll, scroll through the latest news, you can see a list of all those elected positions where there's still time for people to put in their nomination papers. And that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, open session minutes of January 19th, 2021. I want to take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the open session minutes of January 19th, 2021.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Vice Chairman Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself, okay. Next on the agenda, finance committee vacancies. Town moderator Kevin Henderson. Kevin, how's the weather in Florida?
Well, it's sunny, but it's not warm. So, but we didn't have any snow.
Neither did we.
Good evening, Mike, and thanks for having me on, allowing me to have some time tonight. I've had conversations before I left with the Finance Committee Jim and John Pumphrey, and another member had to resign due to work obligations. And we're down to 10, possibly down to nine out of 15. And so I, I thought I'd follow up. Rich Penny covered this a couple of weeks ago about people getting involved in committees and helping out. And I'm hoping what he said, and now I'm here two weeks later, we could use some people on various boards of the town, especially the finance committee. And you know, the town moderator, I appoint them, and we currently have five, at least five openings. So to the people of Rockland, no matter whether you're young or you're retired or somewhere in between, if you're interested in learning about the town, this is, the finance committee is a great place to start. If you've got the time to do it, I know there's a lot of work obligations on younger people, but if, if you're going to, if you have children in school, you, you may want to become involved and see how the departments be able to budget, provide the, the help they need to get the jobs done in all the departments. The finance committee is a hardworking volunteer committee made up of citizens from all walks of life. Maybe people out there have a special knowledge, talent, or work-related experience that would help to make budget decisions, the preparations for the annual town meeting or any of our special town meetings. The finance committee is usually the busiest time for the first one, when we, annual town meeting, with the exception of last year. And if you would like to fill any of these positions, you can contact the Selectmen's Office, they have applications. And if you would submit a brief resume, and I mean brief, and they will get it, Doug will get it to me, and we can act on it. I can even do it when I'm in Florida. So, you know, it's unfortunate that we don't have the communication we had years ago with the newspapers, the Ledger and the Enterprise, covering the Selectmen's meetings and other meetings in town. And the only way we can get something out now is unless it goes on Twitter or it goes on, they watch the Selectmen's meetings. So the finance committee, they work very hard. They've had, sometimes they have to make tough decisions. Doesn't always set well with a department head or whatever, but we do need a committee that makes these decisions in order to work with the town administrator and the town accountant to, so we can get the job done in May. So if you know of anybody and anybody's interested in the town from the Board of Selectmen, get them to sign up and, and we could get them added to the finance committee. And I appreciate you giving me the time tonight to speak.
Always glad to have you, Kev. Anybody from the board, any comments?
I mean, my only comment is, it's not just the FinCon we heard Doug with, with the charter. And I don't know if it's COVID-related, because we certainly have seen, after a couple of years of, of increase in citizen participation over this last year, we've seen it kind of go the other way. And I know people have been locked away in their houses and, you know, life has changed. But the town business still goes on. And I do think, you know, you look at posts in social media, you know, there's always people that aren't happy with how the town's being run. What they don't always understand, the town is run by the townspeople. You know, as much as, as much as people want to make this up, that the town is run by outsiders and beyond their input, it's, it's very much different. It is, it is run by townspeople. You know, the people on the zoning board, on the planning board, on the conservation, the Board of Selectmen, the FinCon, the school committee, just keep going down the list. It's all your neighbors, you know? And, and those are the people that are trying to make decisions in the best interest of the town, right? For, for you, for the 18,000. And when we don't have the boards filled, it makes it more difficult to get the right decisions. You know, and I know people always are concerned, you know, what is the time commitment? And each committee's different. Some committees, it's, it's minimal. You know, the FinCon is, is one that actually, you know, I think three of us on the board sat on. And it is a committee that takes up more time than most, but it also is one of the most impactful committees. And to Kevin's point, if you want to learn about the town, it's the place to go. You literally will, will know the pulse. So, you know, I keep saying the same thing. If we don't have residents step up and help run the town, we're going to start heading in the wrong direction. And it will only be on the townspeople on, on why that is. So please, you know, just think about it. As Kevin said, you know, you put the application in, we'll get, get you on the committees, we'll get you up to speed, and it's amazing how much impact you can, that you as a person can have in this town. So, that's it.
And you ready? Anybody else?
Mike, if I could, I, Rich, I appreciate you saying all that. I remember when I first became moderator, you and Michael Lofflin were both on the committee, and it was a great place to, to learn things. And what's amazing is we probably have 40% more registered voters than we had many years ago when I was on the fire department as a younger person. And we had a committee that was always full. And now we have 3,000 or 4,000 more registered voters and, and, and we can't fill the committee. So it is, it is worthwhile if you want to learn and you hit all the points, especially what's said on Twitter at times, you hit it exactly, Rich, that if you, as a former selectman once said, he wasn't happy with the decision, and he, I said to him, if you don't like it, you got to get in the game. And so if you want to get it, you don't like something, get in the game, and maybe you can change it or learn about it. And I appreciate the time, and hopefully you don't get any more snow.
Thanks, Kev. Appreciate it. Okay, on to the next item on the agenda. Players, sports bar and grill request for early opening 213 and 214. Now, I know Jackie was on at one point. Jackie, you still with us? I think you're on mute, if that's you. Jackie?
Hi, sorry.
Hey, Jackie, how are you? You looking for earlier on February 13th and 14th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, yes. Sorry.
So Jack, Jackie, this is Doug, if you can hear me. I just thought it'd be helpful if you could just give the board and the public just a very brief explanation for, I know this is something we've done in the past, but just a brief explanation for why you're looking to open a little bit early on those particular dates, and, and I just thought that'd be helpful. And also a little bit of free advertising for you to say what you're doing.
So we're just looking to open earlier on the 13th and the 14th to provide a brunch type set of reservations for Valentine's Day through players, on the player's side, and all socially distanced guidelines still in place. We just have more seating in the area of the function room. So that's why we're looking to open up a little bit earlier so that we can have 90-minute seatings.
What time are you looking to open up, Jackie?
Uh, 9:00 AM.
Okay, how, anybody have any other questions for Jackie?
Other than a motion to approve them opening up on the 13th and 14th at 9:00 AM.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second, that.
Motion and second, all those in favor? Vice Chairman Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself, Jackie, that's unanimous.
Jackie, good luck.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. It's a little better. All right, next on the agenda, county update. Our newest, Jared Valenzola. Jared, how are you?
I'm well, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Doing well. So one of the things that we thought we might take advantage of having the very first county commissioner ever elected from the town of Rockland, was we thought we might be able to get kind of an update as to what, what really goes on in the county commissioner's office. I don't think the general public really, you know, knows the details as to what goes on behind the scenes and what it is that you guys do and what you guys do in the town. So, you know, I'll leave it pretty much open for you to kind of discuss a couple of the things that you guys got going on, and then I'll open up to the, the rest of the board to ask you some questions if they have any.
Definitely, thank you.
Jared, make sure you're comfortable before you start talking.
My feet are up, Rich, don't worry, I'm very comfy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the rest of the board. I, before I do begin, I do want to echo Chief Henderson and Selectman Penny's sentiments about serving the town. Especially in the case with Rich, I was appointed to the school building committee when I was 18 years old, and I've served in some capacity to the town of Rockland since. Just to give you an idea of how long that, what, long ago that was, my dad was still a selectman at the time. So I echo your sentiments about, about serving the community. It can be very rewarding. As it relates to the county, I do want to also offer the greetings of my colleagues, Commissioner Greg Hanley, our chairman, and Commissioner Sandra Wright. And I also do want to thank Mike Mullen for his service to the Plymouth County Advisory Board. To your point, Mr. Chairman, a lot of folks aren't really aware of what county government does, much like the Board of Selectmen's, the executive branch of the town. The county commissioners are the executive branch of Plymouth County, which of course is 27 communities, including Rockland and the city of Brockton. Our legislative branch is the advisory board, which is comprised of 26 selectmen, and I believe an appointee of the mayor of Brockton, which seems to almost always be a city council member. So that's our legislative branch. For Rockland, Mike Mullen has served in that capacity, not only on the advisory board, but on the executive branch. And I know Plymouth County has been very well-served by his knowledge and passion for county government, as well as the town of Rockland. So, so thank you, Mike. Some of the things that Plymouth County does, I'll, I'll bring to, to a couple of things to your attention. We have the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, and that's something the town of Rockland was in. Up until just a couple of years ago, they did leave. One of the rate comparisons that I've done has proven, of all the communities that are in it, rates tend to be better. So if that's something that the town of Rockland might be interested in exploring, rejoining, we can arrange a conversation for that. Another one that I, I'm very gung ho about is our Plymouth County OPEB Trust Fund, which is another program that's available of the town of Rockland, I don't believe participates in either. As you can tell, I came prepared with some things that might be beneficial for Rockland. And for the folks that don't know, that is, that is investing money into other post-employment benefits. I believe, I'm not sure where the town of Rockland is now, but just to give you an idea of the return on investment that Plymouth County has had, the actualized, annualized return for three years is 9.5%. The five-year return has been 11.59% to the best of my knowledge from Treasurer O'Brien and others. That has outpaced the state's performance as well. If the town of Rockland is interested in rejoining or joining that program as well, I'd be happy to set up a time offline with Doug, John Ellard, and Biz. The biggest thing that we've been doing, and perhaps the most impactful though, of the last year has been the Plymouth County, I'm sorry, the COVID CARES Act that Plymouth County has been executing. So far, the town of Rockland's cap has been 2.85 million, of which $367,069.10 has been accounted for. I know Treasurer O'Brien has been very complimentary of Biz, Doug, and the entire accounting team in Town Hall for their hard work. Some communities often don't get quite the quick approvals that Rockland does, and other communities have tried to submit items that might not be reimbursable. But Rockland's has always been pretty clean and very straightforward, and we're grateful for that, because it's, it's been a big program. As I alluded to, there's 27 communities, it's a $90 million program. And one of the things that I'll share with the residents, because I've seen a couple of posts that I've made and that others have made over the distribution of this money, it's important to note and realize that this CARES Act funds more or less acts as a reimbursement program. I know when I've been out in communities and when I've seen other posts in other towns and even in Rockland, a lot of folks have expressed interest in having the county or these funds go to something specific. The county is not proactive in spending these funds. These funds are being reimbursed to the communities for expenses that were not previously planned for or that have been incurred relative to COVID-19. So one of the things that I try to do when I do have folks commenting on ideas that they'd like to see is relate to selectmen and relate to the folks in Plymouth County on a local level, what some of their residents would like to see, what they would like to see. But again, I do like to, I would like to reiterate that it's more or less a reimbursement program. And again, Rockland has been fantastic in it. You still have quite a bit of money, but I'm confident Biz and Doug and, and you folks will find, will be using your cap. Some of the other things that we do do, we do have a dredge program, which was rolled out several years ago, sort of an example of Plymouth County trying to do something big only to realize that maybe we should start, it should have started off a little bit smaller, occasionally gets maligned. But if there are communities that are interested in dredging, in Rockland's case, it would be Reed's Pond, so Larry's, Larry's Harbor master duties there. If we're looking to dredge something like Reed's Pond, if that were to be feasible or logical even, the county has that available to the communities. Another thing that the Plymouth County offers is a municipal vehicle bid that multiple states actually use. So Plymouth County has deals with dealerships in which communities can utilize our bidding power. And we do go up against, I think, the MAPC or another state agency, but our pricing is usually better on those programs. We have the Plymouth County 4-H Extension Program, which is available to all residents of Plymouth County and beyond down at the old Sheris Farm. In that, on that property, we are building a greenhouse, and also housed within our county administration building is an entomologist, which is the study of bugs. So if you happen to find an insect that you're unaware of, send a picture in and they can help you identify it. And the last thing that I know we are working on, and it's again a slowly but surely climb, is the potential grant writing office. One of the things that we're working on is getting a couple of communities, two or three at start, to agree to a memorandum of understanding in which they would invest $25,000 into establishing a county, into establishing a grant writing office. I know Jen does a lot of hard work in this department for Rockland, but grant writing, as most of us know, that have experienced it, been around it, or had anything to do with it, it can be a bear. And, and especially for the medium-to-smaller-sized communities in Plymouth County, a lot of them can't afford that at all. Rockland's obviously lucky to have the town administrator and the assistant town administrator who do a fantastic job with that. It could be something that the town of Rockland might look to spend a little money on and join with some other communities to help supplement the work that you're already doing. And that's, that's some of the stuff that we are working on. I do want to compliment Treasurer O'Brien and his team, as well as Frank Basler, our administrator. One thing to note, Plymouth County's budget overall in the last 10 years has remained pretty much stagnant at about $10 million. It has not seen an increase, has seen some dips, some increases. But all the programs, and I left, I only, Mr. Chairman, did the ones that are relevant to Rockland. There's a myriad of other programs, courthouse management, union negotiations, and things of that nature that, that we do that go on behind the scenes. And we've done it on a very, very small budget for a long time. And our team, much like a lot of municipal teams, work extremely hard to be, as we like to say, the best value that any community can get. And I know, especially as it relates to the CARES Act, Rockland and other towns have benefited greatly from the administration of those funds. The last thing I'll, I'll bring to your attention, and then I'll open up to question, questions. The governor recently released his budget, and built into that budget is outside section 77, which is to study the usefulness of county government. I know Doug, coming from the Cape Barn Municipal County, certainly an organized county government, Mike being the Norfolk County Administrator. We forget that of the 14 counties in Massachusetts, only seven still have some form of county government. This section would study the usefulness of county government going forward. Reading the language, it seems to indicate, judging by the lack of county people that would be on this study commission, seems Seems like there might be a recommendation to potentially eliminate county government, which I know is usually. On the agenda of most governors when they, when they come in, no matter, no matter who it is. So I would ask down the road, this might come up for. This might come up, but we might be looking for our communities to. Sort of rally behind a county government. If Plymouth County Commissioners. Didn't exist, there wouldn't be Cares Act money coming to the town of Rockland. That's. That's a fact and they wouldn't be Cares Act money going to anywhere else in Plymouth County. So. If you're talking to Senator Keenan, Representative DeCoste. We'd just like to ask that you let them know how much you like county government and ask them to. Not include this in their respective versions of the budget. And that is all I have. Thank you. Happy to take questions as well.
Thanks, Jared. I'll open it up to the board. Any, any questions or comments for Commissioner Valenzuela?
Yeah, I guess I'll start and I could probably have like an hour-long. Conversation with Jared and with everyone about everything that Jared mentioned. But for the sake of all of us, I won't, I promise, but but I really, I really. First of all, I want to thank Jared, Alec for, Alec his role as a county commissioner. Alec and congratulations on being elected, but Alec also, as you mentioned, you. Have been involved in Rockland, Alec actually since it was, I think, the cool thing to do to be involved in Rockland. And. Oh, you know, I mean, in terms of the school building committee, the planning board, the charter commission, you know, like really. Oh, everything that's happened, you know, I mean, oh, you know, ninety five percent of it really good. Has had your name on it over the last year, ten, fifteen years, Jared. I mean, and now having you. You know, as a Plymouth County Commissioner. Oh, like, I mean, and having, I mean, obviously, you're the first county commissioner from Rockland. Okay, knowing that you'll always bring Rockland with you. You know, I think to the county commissioner's offices, I'm extremely helpful, but yeah, I mean, I'm. I, as you mentioned, I am a big believer in regional government. You know, I mean, I think the, I think. Oh, you know, I think different groups over the years like MAPC. And others group, you know, they have found a way in to do a lot of the things that county governments. Should really be doing. And I think there is a really, like in over the last. Three, four, five years, a concerted effort really bring. Trying to bring a lot of those functions back to the counties. And I think there's a real opportunity to do that now with the leadership. That we have with Plymouth County and other counties as well. And. I, you know, I just think, you know, I mean. I actually, at the advisory board meeting that the county had in November, I mean, one of the things that the county is actually doing now. Like is they're pre-funding their retirement obligation and they're pre-funding their OPEB. And like, I think the forward thinkingness of that, a whole thing in the county's ability to do that. It shows how financially secure our counties are. I like in the forward thinking this. I like of the leadership in doing those things as well. So, like, I think it's great, Jared, and I just want to thank you. So. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that and I'm glad you mentioned some of that forward thinking. With the county, a lot of what you just mentioned, especially as it relates to to OPEB and. We are one of the most well-funded OPEB. Entities in the Commonwealth. And when we look at some of the ways, especially the state is funded. Using one-time federal funds, stabilization funds. Again, Plymouth County has has maintained pretty much lawful funding. As it relates to stuff like MAPC, I enjoy working with them. Was on the planning board in Rockland, I think they do. Great work, but one of the things I did note with them is they definitely have. More of an urban sort of feel. Rockland certainly has a nice, robust downtown, of course, it's. We're working on developing it, but nevertheless, the infrastructure there. Rockland does have some urban. One of the things I've noticed running for county commissioner was. Many communities that could benefit from a regional planning service. That. MAPC might not be able to. MAPC might not even reach out that way. And as it relates to regional governance, it's good.
So Jared, I, I think your audio, did you frozen?
Jared, could you repeat that, please?
My, that's my better in my.
Jared, he was joking. You don't have to repeat it.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I think we got you now.
Yeah, that was great.
Jared, you appreciate it when you watch the playback of this. It was something, like something out of Star Wars, so.
We can't hear you.
All right, so. So Jared.
Can you hear me not at all?
All right, seriously, can we mute him, please?
Jared, so.
I believe me, I wasn't acknowledging you, Doug.
I just want to say that Ben is crying right now. There are literally tears.
Ah, thank you. Still can't.
How about now?
How is he still talking? He's muted. Can I just, Mike, you want me just to like remove him so we can move on? Okay, Jared, we'll give you, we'll give you a chance to kind of just, at least to the better send off. You, you. You were frozen for, I, I think, like, four minutes of that.
Well, I'm on my, I'm on my phone now. Is this better?
Much better. We were trying, we were trying to tell you, but.
I will note the irony, I was using a Rockland Public Schools Chromebook, so that is a COVID Cares Act reimbursable item. If the school departments need new Chromebooks.
Maybe we should resubmit for that, if that's the case. All right, so Jared, you know, I think, I think on the playback, you'll really appreciate that. I think we lost a few of the people on the panel here tonight. You might need to, you might need to seek a recess and recollect ourselves, but I think you'll appreciate the playback on that. When you, when you get to watch it on YouTube tomorrow, but Jared, thank you. We appreciate the update. Anybody else have any other questions? Dare I, dare I ask anybody else have any other questions for Jared, just in case we. Get another answer like that last one?
Please, no.
Okay, Jared, I, you know, we heard for the most part what you said, it was, it was very. It was very drawn out and monotone, but you know, not, you know. The part where the, we had the technical difficulties, not the whole, the whole rest of it. That was, that was, that was great. So, you know, we'd like to do this again, obviously, at some. Maybe, you know, quarterly update from, from the commissioner's office. Just kind of let us know what's going on and what we can expect for the town of Rockland from your office going forward. With that, and congratulations. On winning in a, in a, the election.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda. National Grid easement approval regarding school building project.
Thanks, Mike. I'm just trying to keep a straight face right now because I got the giggles from that. That was, that was nuts. So I received an email, which I included in your packet. With a request from National Grid for us to grant an easement. And it looked to me like it was, seemed to be pretty obviously related to the new school construction project. But I wanted to be a hundred percent sure, so I put it out to the, the engineers. Related to the project and you have in, in your packet, the email where they confirmed. That this is required to allow National Grid to install, access and maintain the overhead. And underground electric utilities that extend beyond the town right away into the school property. And I'll just throw up, share my screen here so everyone can see the school. Lieutenant Colonel Brian Duffy Way, Reed Street, and then you can see the different easement areas. So I would. Just recommend that the board vote to execute that. And I also want to note that I have the original hard copy here in Town Hall. So if you could each come by and sign it just as, you know, as soon as you're able, because we have to get that notarized and sent back to them as soon as possible. And I know that in general, these kinds of things, we, we want to do quickly to, to keep. The project moving and not, not be a bottleneck in any way for any of the infrastructure that has to get done. So that's pretty much it for my end.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to. The National Grid easement.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. That'll be funny. Not funny. No move.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? I think Larry said second. So all those in favor, Vice Chairman Nyman.
Yes.
Selectman Ryan?
Yes.
Selectman Mullen?
Yes.
And Selectman Penny?
Yes.
And myself, that's unanimous. Okay, next on the agenda, other new business not reasonably anticipated, Doug? Okay. Next, old business, vote to execute deed for sale of assessors parcel. Number three dash one A at intersection of Abington and Wayman Streets.
Thanks, Mike. So we're finally ready to, to close on this property, I believe. I know that we've talked about this several times before, we issued a formal request for proposals. I just wasn't a hundred percent certain if you guys had taken the formal vote to execute the deed or not. To be honest, I just kind of took the lazy way out and said, well, let's just vote again tonight because it'll just cover all bases. I'll just throw up again. This is the plan, Wayman Street, where you kind of make that sort of funny. Turn where the road was realigned to go into Abington Street to go up toward Wayman. And that area here in the red, it's just this little portion of a, what used to be part of the road layout before the road was reconfigured. As well, we issued the RFP and the successful buyer was the commercial property behind it. The bid price was four thousand five hundred dollars. So what we're looking for tonight is just to have you vote to execute the deed. And again, we have that original document here for you guys to sign, which will notarize and then. We'll get the rest of the money, give it to the treasurer and the town accountant and they will have the property and they'll, they'll improve it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Execute the deed for the sale of assessors parcel number three dash one A at the intersection of Abington and Wayman Streets.
I have a motion. Do you have a second? Motion and a second. Aldous in favor, Vice Chairman Nyman?
Yes.
Selectman Ryan?
Yes.
Selectman Mullen?
Yes.
Selectman Penny?
Yes.
And myself, that's unanimous. All right, next on the agenda, COVID nineteen update, Doug?
Thanks, Mike. So there is a lot going on. As everyone knows, we all see the news, we're all aware of, you know, what's coming out of the state, et cetera. I thought I'd provide. A few more updates. The first thing is we have currently a hundred and twenty-three active cases in town. None of which are at the nursing homes. So it's good news that our nursing homes are safe, but we do have a hundred and twenty-three active cases. Our. Health agent, our Board of Health is, you know, working overtime on. Just dealing with the volume of cases in town. In addition, we did have one department here in Town Hall, where within one department, we had two positive cases. So that, excuse me, so that department is. Closed down. Staff that are healthy, excuse me, staff that are healthy are. Working remotely, so we are still conducting business, but there is one department here at Town Hall that is down. Until everyone is cleared to come back to work. I do anticipate that we'll have people coming back next week. In addition, there are two other town staff in another department and a different town building outside of Town Hall. That are positive, so they're also taking the appropriate action. So. We're all doing the best we can, but like the rest of the community, the rest of the state and the country, you know, the virus is spreading. State vaccine sites are ramping up. I know probably you've all heard about in the news, whether it's Fenway Park or Gillette Stadium or. Variety of other places, but state vaccine sites are ramping up and I saw a press conference today that the federal government. Is going to start sending vaccine doses directly to pharmacy chains starting next week. So that's good. There will be more opportunities in addition to the state sites at various. Commercial pharmacy chains like CVS and Walgreens starting next week. From the town perspective, quite a bit has been happening and I'm pleased to announce a few things tonight. The first is that the town of Rockland will be doing a public testing clinic. When I say public, I mean anybody from the public. And that's going to be held on several weekends this month in February. And it's going to start this weekend, Saturday, February sixth and seventh. And it's going to be at the Memorial Park School. It's going to be a drive-through. There'll be no cost to the customer. They will take insurance information to hopefully be able to build the insurance company. But tomorrow, which will be Wednesday, the third, we'll start pushing out information on the town website. And, you know, through Facebook and Twitter, et cetera. So we're very pleased and we anticipate we'll be offering this for, for several different weekends in the month of February, and that's for testing. Regarding vaccines, the town has also just ordered. One thousand nine hundred and fifty doses from the state. So that we can do our first vaccination clinic. And I'm going to try to share my screen. Briefly with you here. Here with me, this is the listing from the state. We're just now in phase two. And this is the prior, the order, the listing of who's eligible to get vaccinated and it's in the order of priority. So what we're going to be targeting with this, this first batch that we've requested. Nine hundred and fifty vaccine doses will be just for this top tier. Town residents aged seventy-five and over. So there will be more info. To follow on that soon, once we get a little bit more info from the state about exactly when we can expect to receive the vaccine. Once we get that date, then we'll go out and we'll push out the information for exactly how folks can register for that. Next, I just want to highlight that we have a dedicated phone extension set up at the Board of Health. For COVID vaccine information. So it's the main number at Rockland Town Hall, which is seven eight one. Eight seven one eighteen seventy-four. So it's the main number. And you can, as soon as you get into the recording, you can just hit extension eight. Extension eight will get you right to the latest information. For COVID. I know not everybody's on Facebook or Twitter and some folks are more comfortable with the phone, so I'd encourage people. To, to hit that extension. And then lastly, I just wanted to remind the public and I'm gonna. Share my screen one last time, that. The best way that people can stay up to date with information, this is the town website. They click on this notify me button right here in the middle. When you click notify me. You'll see there's all these different categories of things that people can sign up for. And I would encourage people to sign up for the Board of Health. Board of Health Alerts, Board of Health News Flashes, you can sign up for email. And or texts. And so when you do that, you'll get constant information from the Board of Health. It could be. Simple things, just like there was a storm and trash pickup was delayed today. And these streets were affected, or it could be really important things like we have a vaccination clinic for those aged seventy-five and over. Here's where you go to get the information. So I'd really encourage people, in addition to the website, Facebook and Twitter, sign up for our, our website alerts. And that's all I had for a COVID update unless any of you had any questions.
Any questions from the board? Doug, I just, I just want to obviously stress, obviously, the importance of phase two of vaccinations to the residents, especially our community of seventy-five and over. I think last I, I checked, there's something around seventeen, eighteen hundred residents. So obviously, you know, I know it's, it's a priority of your office and the Board of Health. It's just, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of people questioning what the town of Rockland are going to be doing for it. So, you know, the sooner you guys have that information and you can get it out to the general public, the better. You know, this is, I, I think of utmost importance for, for, for us at this time, so.
I agree. And one last thing, like I should have said right from the outset, I really just want to especially thank Health Agent Delshawn Smith and Fire Chief Scott Duffy. Everybody's working on this, but those two in particular are just putting in an unbelievable amount of time and effort on this. And this is all in chartered territory for all of, all of us. So I want to thank them in particular.
Perfect. Okay, thanks. Next on the agenda, FY twenty-two budget update.
Thanks, Mike. So in your packet, you have the latest set of spreadsheets with, oh, you know, and one last thing, I'm sorry, on the testing site. I also should have mentioned, thank you to the school department because they are making Memorial School available. We're obviously in close contact with Dr. Cron and Business Manager Jane Hackett. And they and the school committee could not be more supportive of what we're doing. So I want to thank them. So if I can, Mike, I'd like to share my screen and go over a PowerPoint that I've prepared for tonight. I thought it'd be more effective than just kind of flipping through the pages on the spreadsheet. So we're going to go over the FY twenty-two budget. Thought it'd be helpful just to kind of recap. And if there's any problems with my slides not forwarding, please, somebody just jump in and let me know. I wanted to start with a recap of what we did at FY twenty-one because that, that affects how we move going forward. So just as a review, FY twenty-one, the, the budget crisis that we were faced with COVID, you know, came at the eleventh hour. Nobody was prepared for it. So we were understandably forced to use one-time sources of revenue to balance the budget, our stabilization fund. Take, we took money out of OPEB and free cash. We refer to some of these as rainy day funds and it was certainly raining and we needed to do that. But we also recognized at the time that while that was getting us through FY twenty-one, that's just simply not a sustainable practice going forward. Because, you know, by definition, one time means they're not recurring and we need to cover our recurring expenses. So something we have to keep in mind coming into FY twenty-two. So looking into FY twenty-two, again, we're, we're looking to avoid any similar use of one-time funds again because it's just not a sustainable practice. Another overarching objective for us is to prevent any furloughs and layoffs. It's for a variety of reasons. Number one, you know, we're very thinly staffed as it is. We, we don't, we don't have any fat departments. And number two, we, you know, we, you know, it's not going to help the economy to have us paying unemployment and have people unemployed. But mainly, we are, we are not staffed to be able to lay people off without really cutting into our delivery of services. The next objective that we have, Biz and I have been, we've mentioned this earlier, we got, I'll talk a little bit more about it now. But we really want to start talking more about evaluating establishing enterprise funds for water and sewer. Again, this is something recommended by the Department of Revenue. It's also recommended by our auditors. And it's really geared toward making sure that we protect those enterprises so that they can keep any surpluses that they generate, any, any retained earnings. Technically, the way things are structured now, things are commingled with the general fund. The town should be scooping any excess revenues or retained earnings into the general fund at the end of the year. We obviously don't want to do that because they need to be able to build those up to be able to improve their infrastructure and make the capital improvements they have to make. And so the proper way to be able to do that legally is through an enterprise fund where each of those entities would be considered its own separate enterprise fund. And any surpluses retained earnings at the end of the year, stay with that enterprise fund. They don't go back to the general fund and they can build them over time. It also makes the accounting significantly easier for Biz and the accounting department and with their reporting to the Department of Revenue. And I, I wanted to talk about it a little bit more tonight because the last meeting, when I mentioned that, I know there was some chatter with some folks in the community where there was a concern that we were kind of trying to pull a fast one and trying to take some revenues away from those departments to offset other things. And it's literally the exact opposite of that. What, what establishing enterprise funds would do would be to protect the finances of those entities and to keep water and sewer revenues in the water and sewer departments and let them build those revenues to be able to make future improvements. If you had questions specifically about the, the technical accounting part, obviously Biz can speak to that. But I just thought it'd be helpful generally to understand what we're talking about. And that the way it would work, town meeting would vote to establish the enterprise fund and then each year with a budget, there'd be a separate enterprise fund vote for them. We have had, Biz and I have already had a preliminary discussion with the Water Superintendent Joe DePointe. We had a good in-depth discussion with him. He fully understood what we were talking about. He agreed. It made all the sense in the world. He's going to bring that back to his commissioners. He does not foresee, right now at least, any problems with us doing that for this upcoming May town meeting. Now, we've not had those discussions yet on the sewer side, mainly because the sewer department's in, you know, a greater state of transition right now. They're in the middle of hiring a new sewer superintendent and they're very busy right now with, with those meetings. So I, I would, you know, presumably they're going to be hiring a new superintendent soon. When that person comes on board, we're going to have that discussion with them immediately and then try to have the same discussion with those commissioners. But it's possible, just because of the different nature of where that commission is right now in that department, that might need to wait until the next year. But this is something we really do think is important to continue discussing. And I had a little footnote below and Jared mentioned this earlier in his presentation, in case folks are wondering about the CARES Act and why that isn't just taking care of everything. There's no CARES Act money that's offsetting any of the lost revenue that we've received. You know, every community across the country has had their budgets been really hurt because of, you know, tax revenues going down, local receipts going down, meals tax, rooms tax, all those types of things. And CARES Act money does not replace lost revenue to communities. It's strictly limited to reimbursing direct expenses and only direct expenses that you have not already budgeted for. You can't use it to backfill expenses that you already have. So as Jared said, we have about two point eight million that the, that the town was allocated on the whole. And we're going to use every penny of that. But again, that's for things like, you know, joked about the extra Chromebooks, you know, extra staff that the school had to hire, you know, technology, you, you name it. There's a lot of things that are outside of our normal operating budgets. I think this is probably the most important slide out of the, out of the whole presentation, which is just a sort of a pictorial assessment of kind of where we're at with revenues and our state assessments. So the biggest part of good news from my perspective is the marijuana dispensaries. So we, as you know, we have Canavanna, which is open and operating. And, you know, it's been operating for a few months now, but there's a lag from when they report their sales tax and, and submit their sales tax revenue to the state from when the state then sends us, you know, our, our portion of that. So we, we only just very recently actually got the first set of numbers. And it's, it's going to be impactful for the town. And I just, you know, I can't say enough the, the, kind of the commitment and the decisions that the board made that you all made in the past, as well as the community, you know, voting to accept this new enterprise, this new type of business, this new revenue stream is really critically important. And that the timing could not have worked out better where we're, our revenues are taking a beating because of COVID. And now we have a new recurring revenue stream coming in that's helping to mitigate that somewhat. And it's only going to increase as we get additional dispensaries coming in. So that is one source of really, you know, good news. And the only real impact that I personally have seen thus far has been some traffic on Waymouth Street. You know, there are police details that the business is paying for. But other than that, they've been a very good business and a very good neighbor. And I have confirmed that with the police and fire departments. The next category is the, the South Shore VOTEC. Our assessment for them, the amount that we're charged to, to send them, to pay for our, our residents, our students that choose to go to school there, that was essentially flat year to year. So that's really good news. The biggest thing that we're really disappointed in is the governor's preliminary cherry sheet. The governor's preliminary chapter seventy number is very disappointing. It's essentially flat year to year. I'm not going to try to get into the details of that because I'm not really well-versed in it. But I, my, my understanding is generally, you know, we were expecting a significant bump year to year associated with the Student Opportunities Act. And the numbers that came out, we were excluded. And it's not just the town of Rockland. There's a number of other communities. And I think ultimately, from what I think I understood Dr. Cron and Jane Hackett explaining to me yesterday was that it has to do with, you know, enrollment changes, you know, resulting from COVID and homeschooling and things like that. And it just tipped us out. So the school is obviously very upset about this and they're working overtime right now. And they're going to be working very hard to, to push the houseways and means, along with the other communities that were similarly negatively affected, to try to correct this. Because it really, in our opinion, it really was a mistake because we've always been the poster child of the type of community that needs this type of additional funding. So I've offered, you know, my support and the board's support to help in any way we can in that effort. And so it's going to really be a full-court press to support the schools in getting our fair share of chapter seventy from the Student Opportunities Act. So that's, that's the crossing fingers emoji on, on that one. As far as the process, you know, and kind of an overview, you know, typical, the last year, we did put out request forms to all our department heads. But we did let everybody know, this is a very difficult budget year, so we're not looking for any, any real increases. On the salary front, all of our union collective bargaining agreements are expiring on June thirtieth. So it's tough time to be negotiating the union agreements, but that's, that's what we're doing. And as the board knows, you know, some of our individual department heads still have their own individual employment contracts. While at the board's direction, we have been migrating those whose contracts are expiring off a contract to at-will employees. So we are moving in that direction. Big picture overview, given all of our assumptions about revenues, where we're at and the preliminary numbers that we have from the governor's budget, we're looking at a town-wide total town budget deficit of over six hundred ninety thousand dollars. So we have the seventy thirty split. You all know better than me and, you know, it goes both ways. We share revenues and we also share the, share the pain when we have to make adjustments. So on the town side, it's a little over two hundred thousand dollars and on the school side, it's over four hundred eighty-three thousand is the proportions. So on the town budget, initially, before we start, before we get into the detail, we look at revenue. You know, we share the new revenue seventy thirty with the schools. We have, you know, over a hundred and seventy thousand in new revenue. But then we have our portion of that overall budget deficit that we have to account for. So that's going to leave us, based on the numbers right now, at a thirty-six thousand five hundred ninety-four dollar year-to-year decrease. So that's significant. You know, that's not a cut from a base. That's year-to-year decrease in spending. And on the school side, it's a year-to-year decrease of over eighty-five thousand dollars. So I'm, I'm not going to, I, I should go back and explain that I'm obviously not going to speak to the school budget. That's for the superintendent and the business manager and the school committee to handle. So I know there'll be a, a lot more discussions on the school side for how they accommodate that. On the town side and our budgets, you know, I've met with Biz and various department heads and we're proposing to cover our deficit in three main areas. The first is by reducing, and I, I want to highlight, you know, this is not, this is reducing from our initial budget request posing here. We're looking at cutting the town meetings and election budget by twenty thousand dollars. And that's mainly because last year, you know, we had extra elections and town meetings. You know, we had the, the presidential election and the early voting and the special town meeting, et cetera. So we've, Biz and I have confirmed with Liza Landy, the Assistant Town Clerk, that with this reduction, we'll still be able to meet the town meeting and election needs that we'll have. Public safety dispatching, Biz and I have gone back and forth with the Fire Chief a number of times about this. As the board knows, we have over three hundred thousand normally appropriated for our regional dispatch. Our regional dispatch center, Holbrook, got a state nine-one-one grant. It's a multi-year grant that's going to fully fund our regional dispatch costs. In the current year, it's, it's being fully funded. We have to reapply for it each year. Now, we fully expect that we're going to get this grant each year, but we can't, you know, guarantee it. You know, like if I had to put a percentage on there, maybe it's ninety-nine percent. So we're kind of hedging our bets a little bit. We think it's prudent, given that we have to make cuts and that any cuts are going to be painful, that we take a significant amount out of this line item, knowing that we do have a few more years left in this grant. But we don't want to take the entire amount out because just in case that one percent falls through, that would be too big a nut to try to fix. But we think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is reasonable. And then the remainder, we're taking out of the Highway Department materials and hired equipment, mainly because it's a larger line item. And Dave Taylor, who does an outstanding job at the Highway Department as a, he is most easily able to kind of be flexible with that budget and, you know, do a little more, a little bit less, depending on, on what's available. I, I'm going to try to keep doing these pie charts each year with just sources of revenue and expenses. And, you know, I don't think really the values are the most important thing and the purpose of this is really more for the proportions. So you can see property taxes makes up about fifty-five percent of our revenue. State aid, twenty-six percent, which is a good amount. It's a good chunk, you know, compared to other communities. Local receipts at eleven and debt exclusion at eight percent. And that, that debt exclusion is a little higher, I think, than the previous year because of the school project that we're borrowing funds for. And then on our expense categories, again, this, this tracks pretty much year-to-year similarly. Again, except maybe the debt service line is a little bit bigger because of the school project. But education is our, our largest sector. And the, the percentage and the dollar amount here, I did put a footnote in just to be clear. You know, the bulk of it is for the Rockland Public Schools, but this number also includes the South Shore VOTEC and Norfolk Aggie and the Aggie Transportation. So it's more than just the Rockland Public Schools, although that's the bulk of it. And then obviously, those are big categories are public safety, public works, general government. And, you know, the big one there is benefits. And growing, again, mainly because of the school project is our, our debt service. But this is all pretty similar to what, you know, many other similar, many other communities our size would look like. Issues going forward, I've been talking to the town moderator, Kevin Henderson, and, you know, we, we still think we should just plan on our regular town meeting day. We're thinking it's likely, as we get closer to that date, we'll probably want to reduce the quorum. I shouldn't say we. I, I would recommend that you reduce the quorum again, assuming the state of emergency is still in effect, just to give us that flexibility. I just don't know exactly what's going to happen with turnout. I'm not sure if people are going to just kind of stay away or if more people are vaccinated and people are just getting more comfortable living with this, if we're going to get a larger turnout. But we're just going to have to make sure to work really closely with RPS to make sure that we have overflow rooms that are really going to be working to accommodate overflow. So we'll make sure to accommodate anybody that attends. We're still waiting for our DOR free cash certification. Normally would need, could be done by now. The DOR is behind. But one thing I did want to highlight is, you know, when we do get that number, you know, whatever that, whatever the number is, there's a number of things we're going to have to fund right out of the gate, things like contractual buyouts and our snow and ice deficit. And I know it's a goal that Biz has, and I made sure to put it in parentheses here, that, you know, as we're able to fund it in the future, we surely should look at increasing our snow and ice budget so that we're not as reliant on, on using free cash for that, for the deficit. Also, if we're able, you know, we would like to be able to transfer some money back into OPEB and stabilization. We had to take it out. It'd be nice if we can replenish some of that. And then a new idea that, that Biz has, which I think is a good one, and I think it's also supported by the Department of Revenue, is looking at creating a new additional capital stabilization fund. So instead of our, not instead of, in addition to our regular stabilization fund that can be used for any purpose, having a separate capital stabilization fund. So we know we have some big-ticket items that are coming down the pike. Every year, we just start socking money away and that. And then it's our little savings account for those capital projects which we can take out in the future. That's one way to fund things and there's another one too that I'll discuss in a moment. The next thing I briefly wanted to mention was the, the capital article request that we've received. I'm not going to read everything here word for word because you can see it on the screen and in your packet. But similar to what I was just mentioning a moment ago about a few things that have to be taken out of free cash right out of the gate. You know, when we buy a capital item that has a multi-year lease component, similarly, if, if we can't fund that out of our operating budgets, that's got to come out of free cash right off the top. And we do have one fire admin vehicle and a number of different sped vans that will have over seventy-three thousand that'll have to be funded to, to cover those lease expenses. Then we have, you know, a number of other ones. That's maybe a few that I'd like to highlight is, you know, the recycling center road. We did phase one of We did phase one of that this year, this past year, which was, you know, the highway department came in, ground up the base, fixed the drainage, built it up, put a base down, this, this would do the, the finished top coat. I think this is, would be really important to be able to get done this year if we're able. The new fire engine, that's a very expensive item. I'm going to talk about a possible idea to fund that in the future. There's a few highway items with trucks and some repairs and some, some road repairs that the spring street and summer beach intersection, intersection improvements. That's another large one that I'll talk about along with a fire engine in a minute. Police station roof. That's obviously important. There's still a flat roof portion in the rear that I believe the police want to wait a little bit on, replacing that until the HVAC units on top need to be replaced so that can all be coordinated together. Two police cruisers, like we've done in the past. What we've received thus far from the school is the standard $100,000 in technology that they traditionally ask for. And then I do have the detail, I didn't want to show it in the slide, but there's a number of different sewer and water department capital improvements and items, as well as on the sewer side, some additional studies, which I don't have the detail laid out here, mainly just because, you know, that's all going to come from water and sewer funds. So we don't have to worry about using free cash for that. But I did just want to highlight that and I have the detail if you're interested. So that, what, what I was alluding to a moment ago, in addition to this capital stabilization fund that, you know, is going to take some time for us to build up, to be able to afford some of the larger capital items. As I mentioned a moment ago, we just have to be careful that if we just start leasing too many things, we're just going to start eating up more and more of our free cash and we're going to have less and less available to do other things in the future. There's another financing tool I wanted to throw out there, which I think I've mentioned in the past. It's called a, a capital expenditure exclusion. So if you think of those two things on the prior slide, which was $600,000 for a fire engine and $550,000 for some highway improvements, you know, if we just rough numbers, call it a million dollars, you know, we don't have, we're not going to have a million dollars available in free cash. I don't believe that we can immediately target to fully fund those two items. But a million dollars is also not enough that it would make sense to bond and borrow over time and pay interest for. So the DOR allows this other option, a capital expenditure exclusion, which is similar to a debt exclusion in that town meeting has to authorize it. And then it goes to the ballot and voters would have to vote to raise their taxes to pay for these items. But the key thing is it's for relatively smaller amounts, like a million dollars, say. And it's only a one-year deal. It's one year, there's no borrowing, there's no interest. You buy everything or pay for everything in full and then the next year, that tax increase immediately goes away. And because, you know, it's something that's spread across the whole town and it's, it's not a 50, 60 million dollar school. It's just a million dollars when you spread that across everybody. It's a relatively nominal increase. So I, I'm not proposing that right now for this year. I think this is a, this is a big thing that we're going to have to talk more about. This might be more of a next year thing. But I, I do think as I'm looking at some of these large capital requests, I think a capital expenditure exclusion might be a really good option to look at. And that, you know what, I think I did have another, I'm going to stop sharing my screen because I lost the rest of my slide, so I'm just going to pull it from another source. Bear with me here, I'm sorry. When I added in the latest. There we go. Try this. Bear with me here, can you see the slide with the magic eight ball? Yes, okay. So our next steps then, we're going to continue to evaluate our local receipts and our state revenues and assessments. This is something Biz and Judy in the collector's office and John in the treasurer's office, they do this constantly. But, you know, they're going to continue to do this, this is a work in progress, we're going to monitor our numbers. And we're going to look at the, we're going to monitor the state process, as I said, you know, it's going to go to the House, then the Senate, then a conference committee, then the governor. But it's this next step at the houseways and means that we're really going to focus our efforts to try to have them fix the Chapter 70 number. And, you know, lastly, you know, when is the state budget going to be signed? You know, we certainly hope it's going to be closer to July 1, like it's supposed to be. And if we don't have another year, like last year, we're, we're all stuck in limbo. So I'm cautiously optimistic, we're going to have a more normal year with a more normal time that the budget gets adopted. And then our next steps, as I just mentioned, we're going to continue to refine our numbers. We're going to keep talking with the school department. We've had excellent communications with the school department, you know, these are tough times. But Biz and Jen and I, you know, we talk regularly with Alan and Jane and we have an excellent relationship with them. We know where they're coming from, they know where we're coming from and we're, we're going to, we're going to get it done. Keep working with the finance committee and capital planning committee. And we'd like to have everything wrapped up with you for your meeting on March 16th. And then have the warrant 100% finalized and have you guys physically sign it on the first meeting in April the 6th. And then lastly, just, you know, a shout out for our town accountant, Elizabeth Zaleski, you know, she, I'm presenting this PowerPoint, but on the budget stuff, she does an unbelievable amount of work and in particular, she's very proactive, you know, with this. She's coming to me always thinking two or three or four steps ahead. And that's really truly appreciated. And we have the rest of our finance team with Jen and Judy and Deb and, and, and John. So that's, it's a real team effort. So that's what I have on the budget. Maybe I'll ask before you have any questions for me, maybe I'll just see if Biz or Jen wanted to add anything to what I highlighted. Guess not.
I think you covered it all Doug.
Okay. Open up to the board, any questions or comments? A lot of information.
I have a few thoughts. Like really to start off, like I just wanted to say, you know, very sobering information. But Doug, you have an amazing, incredible way with your budget presentations really to break everything down and to really synthesize everything into a way that we can understand. And I think everyone at home is able to understand as well. And it's really phenomenal. I don't want to, I don't want to take any credit for hiring you, but I will. And and I just want to say very well done. Just in terms of, I mean, I am concerned, I mean, when I heard a few weeks ago, actually just prior to the MMA conference, that the governor, I'm actually had committed to fully funding the Student Opportunities Act. Like I thought back to last year and to the beginning of the FY21 process and what that additional revenue was going to be pre-COVID to the town of Rockland. Oh, oh, because you mentioned based on our needs and the challenges and all the formulas and, and how that all intersects with the funding that we get from the state. And I can then, I can then when I heard, I think prior to the MMA this year, that, oh, you know, this was going to be the year that it was going to be fully funded. Oh, you know, I think like everybody, we thought, okay, we go back to the 1.3, 1.5, whatever it was level that had been proposed last year. And I, like, I think we, and I don't, oh, oh, and I don't want to speak for the board, but I think whatever we can do to work with the school committee, like, like, and our legislators and whoever we need to work with to make sure that we get the funding that we have a demonstrated need for. Like these are unique years and I get that, like with the homeschooling and the other thing, the enrollment jump. But I mean, our needs haven't gone away. Like they've only increased in terms of, oh, I would imagine all the like special ed services and the increased funding that those oh, you know, that those needs and those services really cost to provide in COVID. Like I think we, I, I think as a board, we should be jumping on like in doing whatever we need to do to make sure we get our fair share of that. And I wholeheartedly, oh yeah, like I know you're already on top of it and working with the schools. And that is another highlight, even though, oh, like even though we're facing very challenging times in FY22, you know, I mean, like honestly, I think the fact that you, Biz and Jen have, like have the relationship and have the rapport with the schools that you do, is phenomenal. And anyone who has been part of our Rockland town government for 10 years, like, oh, I can even longer, like understands that that is not something that happens just because or has happened overnight. And I think that's phenomenal. Yes, there are always going to be challenges, but now I think thankfully we have people to work through those, like all those issues really together. So I, like in short, I just want to say whatever we can do, I think as a board, you know, really to make sure we as a town and as a school department, we get that fair funding. Oh, you know, I'm, I yell, I'll do whatever we need to do for that. So that is all I have.
Anybody else have any comments?
I don't have any questions, but I also want to echo my colleagues' comments and just thank Doug for his presentation tonight. It was very thorough. We presented a lot of information, a lot to take in, and I hope the residents appreciate it as well. Also want to thank Jen and Biz and the rest of the financial team at Town Hall for all their hard work during these challenges, challenging times. I know it's not easy, but we appreciate everything you do, so thank you.
Well, thanks Kara, I can just jump in Mike with one thing, you know, I appreciate that. And it's, it is a team effort and I mean that sincerely. And what's important to note for you guys too and the public is, you know, we have a PowerPoint that we showed tonight that, you know, outlines everything. And that, but behind the scenes, all the work going into that, we have very vigorous debates behind the scenes. And we're like, it's not like anybody's, you know, rubber stamping anything. You can see Biz giggling because we, we, we battle all the time and it's a healthy, professional thing. What about this? What about that? Have you thought of this? And so, and it's as a group, we do that constantly and I think that it's productive, you know. And, and the key thing with the school relationship is just that we have a lot of communication with them and we're transparent with them and we're honest and they're honest with us. And I have Alan and Jane's, you know, cell numbers on my phone. I call them on their cell, they call me, we text each other. It's just, there's a lot of, a lot of communication going so that it's, nobody has to get worked up, you know, worried about a meeting or anything because, you know, we're constantly in touch with each other. And that's what's important when with a department that's, you know, 70% of the budget, they're a huge, huge part of, of this community and of the town's budget. And you have to have that kind of relationship to be effective, so we're happy about that.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else?
Briefly, you guys are doing a great job Doug. And, and it's nice to see us working with the school department as a town because, you know, when, at the end of the day, when we reach into the pockets, we, we both reach into the same pockets to take the money from the same people to spend it appropriately within the bounds of each department. And, and Doug and Jen and Biz, you guys got it together and it's a great thing for the town of Rockland. I don't think the average guy understands quite the depth to which you people have gone to make sure that the town is going to be financially secure as well as can, as can be and all the total revenues, blah, blah, blah. And, and I really like the way that you do it without a lot of fanfare and, and all the people I talked to within the town departments or different areas. I mean, you know, nobody says anybody's perfect, but, but you, you got it working together. And the town basically works together. And Mike said, anybody's been over, been here over 10 years, well, I've been here over 20 years. And, you know, I remember almost coming to blows with the school department because of budget cuts and Chapter 70 money and who's going to pay for what and where's it going to come from? And, and now all those issues are defined and that tension no longer really exists. There's still going to be issues, but the tension between the two sides has lessened considerably. And I, and I, and I give both our team and Dr. Cron's team credit for working together to bring Rockland together. It's Rockland, the town of Rockland, it's not, you know, it's not the town side or the school side, it's the town side. And, and that's what we want, that 100% for the whole town to be functioning. And, and you guys are doing a great job. I hate to keep blowing your horns, but the people of Rockland really should appreciate what you have done for the town. And I think you're doing a great job. And one of my goals for Doug on, on our goals and aspirations, I hope you've got that Mike, was, you know, COVID-19 has taken up everybody's time. I mean, other stuff to work on, there's other things that got to be taken care of too. And, and you guys have that in front and behind the scenes, taking care of all the other stuff that has to be done. So please, people of Rockland, appreciate the people that we have working for us. Mike says, he's, he'll be thankful to take some credit for all this, but you know something? There was a lot of us that made these decisions to choose the people that we did. And we went against some decisions to pick some people and we went with our board's decision to pick everyone. And we did all right. The board has done very well and thank you guys and I'm off my soapbox for the night. Thank you.
Larry, you're welcome.
Love you my kid. We're coming down the dighten to your first meeting, you know.
Oh dude, okay.
We're in a swamp, we're swarming the room.
Let's move on.
Okay. Looking forward to it.
That's on the agenda. Other old business that reasonably anticipated, Doug, nothing, okay. County administrators, important correspondence, Doug.
All right, thanks Mike. This is a busy week, it's always busy this time of year. We have the selectmen tonight, finance committee, I think tomorrow night, and capital planning committee Thursday night. But it's good, we're, we're making progress. Just want to highlight a few other things. We are making really good progress with the AW Perry zoning, which is the real name of that is the Gateway Mixed Use Overlay District. We've talked about this before, it's something that AW Perry is proposing to help propose a new zoning overlay district on the part of town just west of what was formerly known as exit 14 off the highway. Jen's really been taking the lead on it with the developers, members of the planning board. And we have MAPC, a regional planning agency that's been hired as the consultant to help, help the town review it from a planning perspective as well as with our land use council. But we are on track for having a final product that'll be presented to and with the planning board in time for them to have their public hearings. So the public will have plenty of time to have their input and decide if they want to support it or not. And then on to the annual town meeting in May. So that is certainly exciting. I talked earlier about the marijuana revenue. So there is a second cannabis dispensary, it's going to be an adult use cannabis dispensary. The name of the facility is Health Circle. They're located at 21 Commerce Road and they should be opening very soon. It could be as soon as even next week. So that is going to be good for the community financially. And, you know, they've been very responsive to meeting all of the public safety needs and infrastructure and planning needs that the community, the zoning board, police and fire have asked for. So we're going to wish Health Circle good luck as they start their business. Next, I wanted to really give extra special thanks to our HR director, Stacy Callahan. She's really been going above and beyond to help the sewer commission with their hiring process for the new superintendent. You know, it's a little bit awkward under the best of circumstances when you have an elected commission and we're trying to kind of support them to make sure that they're following the best practices. But then yet on top of that, a pandemic and not being able to generally meet in person, it's been very complicated. But she's put in a ton of work helping, you know, advertise and receive resumes and communicate with applicants. And then actually put the, do the, help with the initial screening of the resumes. And then she helped lead the first round of interviews that they did do in person, you know, indoors at the RPS studio. The first round of interviews that they did do in person, you know, indoors at the RPS studio. Socially distanced and masked, et cetera, where they interviewed four candidates, they narrowed it down to two. And they're gonna have a final interview later with the two finalists, but really just wanna thank Stacy because it was an exceptional amount of work she's done and. She's really added a lot of value to that process and I know the sewer commissioners feel the same. Next thing I wanted to mention is earlier tonight, there was a zoning board of appeals. Meeting where there was a request from a landowner down at five eleven Union Street, Mr. Kevin McGee. Where he's looking for a use variance to be able to sell, have used car sales. That meeting may have gotten. That meeting may not have been completed. There may have been issues with the Zoom tonight, but ultimately when, if and when that does get. That use variance gets approved by the ZBA, then the next step will be that Mr. McGee would need to apply to the Board of Selectmen. For a class two license. So as, as soon as I'm aware of the outcome of that ZBA use variance. Decision, we'll communicate with Mr. McGee and I'll let the board know when we're ready to have anything before this board. For a vote. Then a couple items that the town treasurer, John Eller, wanted me to mention. The first is that the the tax title auction that the town successfully conducted for three twenty Concord Street. It did officially close. So, you know, there was a winning bidder at the auction, but we, you know, all wanted to make sure that the. The title actually, you know, passed from one party to the other and the closing occurred on January twenty-eighth. So that's excellent news and there is a ninety-day clock, which, you know, has, everybody's aware of where the parcel has to become conforming. Through the appropriate methods or the structure is gonna have to be removed. So we'll, we'll see what the developer chooses to do on that site. The next thing the treasurer wanted me to mention was that the W twos and the ten ninety-nines have all been sent out. So if anyone. Has been expecting one but hasn't received it, please call the treasurer's office. And then the last item is that the stale checklist has been published on the town website and a stale check. Is an uncashed check issued by the town that's over one years, one year old. And the deadline to fill the claim is March thirty-first. And I'm gonna use this as just another kind of shameless opportunity to promote the town website. So just real quick, here's the town website. You can see the town spotlights. These are hot news items. This is COVID vaccine information that we've been talking about earlier. Here you'll see the stale check information. If you see something like that you're interested in, you can just click it. And then you'll see information that the treasurer put out about checks that are available. There's information, a phone number, and then you can click a link which actually brings you to the specific list. So. Just wanted to highlight that. That's continually refreshed on the town, on the town site. That's all I had, but Jen does have one item that I think she can very briefly mention regarding a technical assistance grant from the states. Maybe I'll turn it over to Jen and then I'm all set.
Thanks, Doug. So I just wanted to let the board know that the town did receive a local rapid recovery planning grant. And that's a grant out of the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Program, how's it, Department of Housing, Community Development. It will pair the town with the consultant that will address. Recovery of local economies specifically on Union Street or Rockland's downtown area. It will give, the, the consultant will work with the community to develop baseline data on how the town was most impacted. Because of COVID and then we'll come up with some specific action items the town can undertake. To help the, with the economy recover. So some, we have to, we had to identify some short and long-term. Challenges as well as some short and learn, long-term priorities that were specific to a district. So I think this will be. Some, in some respects, one of the opportunities out of the crisis to really start focusing. On Union Street and, you know, in the meantime, parallel to all the COVID work, we have things, you know, as small as the signage and wave. Signage and wayfinding program that is underway. You know, this might be an opportunity to help implement that program and start drawing some. More foot traffic and maybe even tourism to some degree to, to the downtown area, but really taking a look, making sure that we have no vacant storefronts that. Our food and beverage businesses are back up and running. If there's expanded seating area again that's needed this year, just being ahead of that. Those items. So looking forward to that. The, it's anticipated that there will be funding sources available. This is a, a quick turnaround on the program. It will complete by June. And the expectation is that again, there'll be some funding sources to help the communities who participate in this program and develop a plan. To access funding to implement. The, those sources haven't been identified yet, but again, that is the anticipation and that's what we're hearing from the state.
Sounds good. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, standing on. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Selectmen's comments, comments and opinions expressed by individual members is not the, do not necessarily reflect the views. Of the Board of Selectmen or the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Let's see, Mr. Penny.
Do not have any comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mullen.
Speechless, Mr. Chairman.
First time. Okay, Mr. Ryan.
Just a quick, you never know where someone's gonna turn up story. I have property in Vermont and they messed up my taxes and they sent, I got a letter from the delinquent tax collector from the town of Lunenburg, Vermont. And his name was Ron Cargliano and, you know, it sort of rang a bell with me, but it didn't, you know, you meet a lot of people in your life. Turns out he calls me, the afterwards all straight down, he says, we work together on the Blue Cross building. Now I know him, you know, so he's a, so he's a guy that he told me to say hi to anybody that's listening to our show that remembers him and that. He's enjoying life up in Vermont, far away from the maddening crowd and he actually lives on the ponds right down the street from me. It's got a beautiful place and I plan to go see him when I go ice fishing in a couple of weeks up there. So it was kind of funny that you go all this way and that the delinquent tax collector is somebody I know, so. It's a, you never know where people are gonna turn up. That's all I got.
Yeah, I like, I like that you refer to this as our show. Very entertaining, especially tonight. Vice Chairman Nyman.
I do not have any comments tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I actually do not have any comments either. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, a motion and a second. All those in favor, Vice Chairman Nyman.
Yes.
Selectman Ryan.
Yes.
Selectman Mullen.
Yes.
Selectman Penny.
Yes.
And myself. So with that, good night and thank you.
Night, everyone.